She was able to house train this dog, so. That's right. Wasn't it Willie Nelson that was rolled in a carpet and beat with a broom? Want to know why my mic is always, everybody else's is blue, but mine's off.
Cause you're talking.
No, no, I was teasing, I mean, and you had shut me off. All right, five thirty called order.
Mayor Beeson.
Present.
Commissioner Spielman.
Here.
Commissioner Stover.
Here.
Commissioner Tweedy.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Okay, opening prayer, pledge allegiance. Larry, would you like to give the indication?
Would, let's pray.
Thank you.
Our Father, we thank you so much for the state you've given us, we're thankful for the blessings of it. And we just pray now acknowledging that we need you for this meeting, we thank you so much that you, that you meet with people, that you love us, that you care about us, I pray that you bless this commission as they consider things, bless those that will be presenting tonight. And I just pray that you bless our citizens, especially those who have suffered loss in the last week, pray that you watch over them. We just ask these things in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever and ever, and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or deletions?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, words and proclamations.
Item number one, proclamation, proclaim April twenty second, twenty twenty-five is Earth Day and April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five is Arbor Day in Arkansas City. Proclamation number two is proclaim April twenty-fifth as Fair Housing Month in Arkansas City.
Consent agenda?
Tony, are we going to plan a creed this year?
Oh, sure we will.
Well, Winston Park, or you got a pick, place to pick?
I think Columbia Center and Grand Park.
Okay. Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Any conversation, discussion, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Carries? New business.
City Manager Department, item number one, select a grant administrator to oversee administrative and inspection services for the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program.
All right, so this is essentially the next step in order for us to continue moving forward with the grant that we have for the housing rehab, and this is simply just selecting the grant administrator and inspection services, we've worked with the same company before, last time we did this housing rehab. So in doing so, we had to put RFP out, and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with this process, so with the RFP that was sent out, they were sent to thirteen consultant firms, and then we sent out RFP to seven consultant firms for the inspector services. Unfortunately, after all this outreach, SCED was the only company that responded back with the RFP saying that they will be compliant with it. In doing so, we worked with SCED last time, great company, and here's the bid app. So you can see who attended the bid opening.
Thank you.
And then the company that responded back.
Thank you.
So just for an understanding that we'll have a sole procurement letter written up for you signed, Mayor, just with an understanding that we did send out the RFP to many different consultants, unfortunately, only one responded back.
Why, why, why is it, just it's not big enough for them, or?
From my understanding, it's more of territorial, as far as what companies prefer to work in different areas, travel time, there's a lot that goes into it, so SCED that we worked with.
Great for work.
It is, SCED that we worked with last time, they were phenomenal, through the audit purposes, it's pretty extenuating, and then also with the inspection services of each home, the type of work that's going to be done with it, so I've enjoyed it last time, looking forward to working with them again as we continue apply for this wonderful grant, so.
Okay, this is a voice vote.
Well, I'll make a motion. Right, or see. I make a motion to select a grant administrator to oversee administrative inspection service for the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program.
Second.
That's SCED, you want SCED?
I mean SCED, I'm sorry.
Can we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, carries, number two.
Item number two, consider approval of city insurance coverage for property, liability, vehicles, and equipment.
Okay, so we put out RFPs for insurance this year, and we sent it to several different agents, and then we worked with Gallagher Company, they're a consultant up in Kansas City, with, they, they did bid NPR for us. That's a Midwest Public Risk, it's a insurance pool that does a lot of cities. They didn't, they wouldn't bid on us, they said our last year's was too competitive with EMC, they didn't even want to bid on us, so. So our proposal that we did get back from EMC is a little, is about thirty-eight thousand higher than last year. So last year's total premium was three hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-four. The proposal that we received for this year is four hundred twenty thousand, two dollars. All the deductibles and those things, limits all remain the same. And so we would recommend that you approve that.
I asked Jennifer about, you know, thirty-eight thousand dollar over budget, she said it's, she's got that bill in the budget, so she won't go over budget.
And they did say that, that they had for, it was per incident, not per building.
Right.
What it does, that's all.
Currents.
Currents. Right, okay, for currents, and that that's the only place doing that right now, or pretty close?
Pretty close, yeah.
So we've got a pretty good deal.
Yeah, really, the only other company out there doing cities is Travelers, and then their deductibles and stuff like that are tremendously higher than ours, and so. Right now EMC is still the place to be.
Okay, I make a motion, we consider approval for city insurance coverage of property, liability, vehicles, and equipment.
Second.
Discussion?
Charlie.
Do we need to put it with EMC, or do we need to?
Not a problem, yeah.
Okay, consider approval of city insurance coverage by EMC for property, liability, vehicles, and equipment. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Environmental Services Department.
Item number one, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept a bid submitted by Ingersoll Rand to purchase and install a new air compressor at the water treatment facility for an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand twenty-two dollars and forty-one cents, excluding shipping.
Evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the commission, bringing forward to you the air compressor at the water plant. It's getting up there in years, the current one that we have, so I'd like to have a backup, just because it powers so many vital valves and chemical feed pumps within the plant, so that way if the, the current one ever did go down, we always have a backup there in place.
Well, this will be the same size we cut in there, I mean, it'd be identical what we got?
Uh, the current one we have in there, it'll be identical, the current one we have is a two-head, but lately it's been giving us trouble. And I'm just expecting since those have the same amount of runtime, they'll both go down at the same time if they go down.
Let me ask you this question, so if that one goes down, we get this new one in, then will you fix the old one for a backup for the other one? So we'll always have a backup?
Correct, yeah, we would send it off to get rebuilt, and then we'll have it just sitting.
Okay.
Is there manual backup for these, for these valves, if the air compressor, if it does go down?
You can manually turn them, and we also have the ability to hook up an external, but it only has a very limited runtime that would tie you up for just a few hours.
Kind of pressure it can take?
I can't answer that right now, but I could find out, but a lot.
So you're being proactive instead of reactive?
Correct.
That's a good idea.
Well, we can't have that thing go down, cause it affects everybody else, I mean, if that thing went down, then we'd have problems, wouldn't we?
Correct, yes, we would.
Big draw.
And so, yeah, wouldn't have no water.
Where's this going to be cut it from, it's, you guys budgeted, or it's?
Uh, it's budgeted in the water treatment machinery and equipment budget.
Well, that being said, I make a motion to resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept a bid submitted by Ingersoll Rand to purchase, install a new air compressor at the water treatment facility for an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand twenty-two dollars and forty-one cents, excluding shipping.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Wait a second.
Whoop, go ahead.
It says excluding shipping, I assume that's probably coming out of Wichita.
What's that?
That, well, this air compressor will be coming out of Wichita where the shipping's not going to be.
Probably, most than likely.
Can we go get that, or?
Uh, I can sure ask.
I mean, I hate to volunteer Curtis, but we've got a semi, we've got a class A driver.
Well, they, but.
They're gonna install something, bring it down with them.
Oh, they're gonna install it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a pretty good sized unit, too.
Is that that unit sits outside, or is it inside?
The unit that sits outside, it's on a trailer, small trailers, that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, is that the?
That's the portable one, and that's there just in case everything fails.
Okay.
That's the one you need to hook up the outside.
Okay.
That's, that's what it looks like right there.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion then? All right, this is voice votes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number two.
Item number two, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept a bid submitted by Mountainland Supply Company to purchase fire hydrants and valves for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety dollars excluding shipping.
So this is just getting in new hydrants. The city's full of hundreds, hundred-year-old hydrants that constantly.
Now, where's he's gonna go at, do we know?
Uh, we have a long list of hydrants, so we just.
The worst, you put them at the worst, you know?
Yeah, or wherever they're needed next, we're, we work with the fire department as well, to make sure they go where they need them as well.
There's six of them?
Or eight? There's six.
Once again, what's, what's that, do you have any idea what the shipping's gonna cost, cause nowadays shipping is pretty, pretty critical to a.
I believe they excluded shipping on this, and then they're gonna tack it on later.
If you don't know what that would be.
Uh, they could give me an estimate at the moment.
If I can interject there, you're, you're gonna see a lot of those come lately, because we had a problem a while back where, where a certain amount was approved on something, and it didn't include shipping, so I think that's why these are written up that way, that you'll, you'll see that probably from now on.
Can we make that part of the bid? I mean, separate from the actual bid itself.
Well, once it comes in.
Yeah, I don't know that they always know what it's gonna be that early, is, I think is why that's written that way.
I'm saying, as mentioned, this is something that we could probably go up and get ourselves.
So.
Yeah, yeah, Mountainlands in Wichita.
And I'm sure as gas prices drop, that they'll probably lower that rate.
Yeah, for six fires.
I'm sure they will.
Well, you could figure out what the shipping gonna be, if it's gonna be ridiculous.
Right.
I'm essential to tell you what to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we approve a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept a bid submitted by Mountainland Supply Company to purchase five hydrants and valves for an amount. For fire hydrants, purchase.
Oh, they said five, I'm sorry.
My half, who knows? For an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety, excluding shipping.
Second.
Okay, it's a voice vote, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes?
Okay, item number three, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to purchase replacement conduct, conductivity and pH probes from Hock, Hack for an amount not to exceed ten thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars excluding shipping.
Can you explain what that is?
So, on whenever we're producing water, we have our RO filters, and then we track the conductivity coming in and out of them, and this is a way of telling us whether they're working correctly or not, these probes. So they just read data from the water, give us an.
How long will they last, I mean, is this the first time we've placed them since we built the water plant?
Yep, yep, ever since the water plant's been built, which I believe was in twenty seventeen, so.
We got a good run on them, then.
Yep.
And I'm seeing a, I'm seeing a pattern here, we've been doing a lot of replacements at the water plant, but if it's, if everything's been new and it's just now getting replaced, it should all be replaced by the same time.
Like the membranes, that was.
Right.
The timing was about what everybody expected.
Right.
A lot of stuff's just coming up on their lifespan at the water plant, and this was after Hawk did a servicing, they went, checked those, and they told us they're needing replaced.
Okay. Good news is we know about the lifespan now, so if they try to hit us earlier, we'll know better.
Make a motion that we approve a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to purchase replacement conductivity and pH probes from Hawk? For an amount not to exceed ten thousand three hundred and twenty-four thousand, excluding shipping.
Second. It's a voice vote, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept a bid provided by FTC Equipment LLC for the purchase and installation pumps and materials to replace raw wet well pump, number four, for an amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand eighty-two dollars and thirty-two cents excluding shipping.
So this is one of the raw wet well pumps, which is what pulls in the entire collection system into the wastewater plant, and then moves it where it needs to go within the wastewater plant. This specific pump is one of the larger ones, so whenever we have large rain events and large flow increases, this is one they kick on to pull in everything all at once. And this is something that's been in place since the nineteen eighties.
Where's that pump located at?
Uh, it's down in the raw wet well. Remember, did you, we did a tour of the wastewater plant, that giant pit that they have there at the very bottom of it.
We didn't place that pump when we did, we did the wastewater plant?
Uh, I wasn't around for that.
Yeah, we did, there were some pumps, there was several pumps out there that didn't.
Okay, I, okay.
Kyle, that's four items you brought up, I feel like you've blown your budget, so you're not gonna come ask for anything else till August, or October, November?
Won't see me again for another year.
Okay.
By a feeling that's not the case.
Hey. Well, I make a motion, or a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept a bid provided by FTC Equipment LLC for the purchase and installation pumps, materials to replace raw wet well pump number four, for an amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand eighty-two dollars and thirty-two cents, excluding shipping. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, members of the commission.
Public Service Department, item number one, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept a bid submitted by Mid-American Signal, Inc. for the traffic system at the Kansas and Summit Street intersection for an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Member of the Commission, uh, this is to upgrade Kansas and Summit intersection with radar detection, get rid of the lights, the camera system there, you know.
Is it gonna be like the one at the middle school, Tony?
Yes.
Is it identical to that one?
Yes.
That's, that one really works.
Yes, this, their system is far better than the one we installed out at Skyline and Summit, because when they installed that one, we found out it was installation issue, when they hooked everything up, it wasn't grounded, so it burnt brain box in the control system, so.
But did they take care of that?
They finally did, it took two and a half months to get the piece in to fix it, but it was on their dime, good. So with Mid-American Signal, their systems have been everywhere in California, New York, major highways, eight lanes, and never had any issues with them. They've been at it for a long time. Both entities that bid this do not install the radar itself or the cables. The city crew will hook the radars up and will pull the wire for these, for company. But the price that they gave us is lower than GATI's, and it's also a better system, I believe. The only issue we had at Sea in Kansas was a tree growing out far enough to where the radar picked them up as a pedestrian, and would change the lights, so, once we pin the tree back, we haven't had any issues.
Did you guys do the, you pull the wires every time that's used?
Yeah.
So you know what you're doing?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Matter of fact, it was myself and Marcus Lynn and Leo and Wade who installed all that, okay.
Uh, not changing subject, but what about playground equipment at Wilson Park, we got that coming in, or?
We were looking at a new system for that, and then I was speaking with Nick Rizzo, who also saw a grant for, I believe it was eight hundred thousand dollars that he's maybe gonna apply for, or did.
Yeah, so CBDG has changed their program, they're gonna go to multiple rounds this next year, so if we take that existing grant application that we just did, and make application for May, with it, we would be ready to go to try to get that eight hundred thousand again for that same project.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So that would give us roughly nine hundred and twen, nine, but, yeah, nine hundred and some thousand dollars worth of playground equipment.
I'm gonna buy a lottery ticket tonight.
Yeah. Well, yeah, but, and, and again, at some point, if we.
Yeah.
We don't, I mean, we could apply for it each time, but at some point, we'd have to either change.
But we still had the money for the playground equipment in the budget, didn't we?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're just, I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and he was planning on moving ahead and go ahead and replacing what he did, but.
Yeah.
If we pull off a bit and try to.
Sure.
Grant one more time.
Sure. Yeah.
It'd be great.
So.
Sorry to change the subject.
Oh, no, that's quite all right. I'd rather do it all at once than do it in pieces, believe me.
Well, that being said, I make a motion, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to accept a bid submitted by Mid-American Signal Incorporated for the traffic system at Kansas and Summit intersection for an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Second. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
How long is it gonna be before we get it?
So the Skyline and Summit's good now? Is there, what's your opinion on the yellow light flashing for turn? If it's clear? You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Instead of just a.
Yeah. Yeah. That's sooner to be turning red so the cars can get through.
Yeah. What's your opinion on that?
It works a lot, I mean, I've seen it in both cities, they do a lot, so it's ripped off, so. Side's going, it's flowing, and also to let the drivers know they're running out of time.
And you're talking about the one there at Skyline?
The, the left turn signal.
The only one that makes me nervous there is those guys are coming in at fifty-five.
Well, when the turn lanes are going, that traffic's held up.
Yeah, I mean, over the flashing yellow, you'd have green on the other side.
Well, it's, it's yellow, I mean, flashing yellow means caution.
Yeah, it means caution.
Doesn't mean they're gonna caution.
Speed limit's forty-five there, too.
Yes.
Well, it's for you guys, maybe. I don't do it till I hit the city limit.
First party.
Please, chief. Okay. Uh, city manager updates?
Yeah, I don't have a lot. Today, Matt, myself, Kyle, and Mick from the water plant, we met with SISA, that's the group from Homeland Security that does cybersecurity. And we did an assessment of, of the changes that we've made so far, and how our, the policies and different things that we're doing with our cybersecurity, and so they're gonna, they'll have a report for us here in a few weeks, and that'll give us kind of our baseline now, and then give us some suggestions on how we can improve things, and try to make it even harder to attack. They also, as part of that group, they have a, so that was a cyber side, they actually have a facility side where we, they'll come in and assess our facilities for our accessibility to the physical facility, you know, with our gates, smart security and things like that, so they'll be coming out and assessing those, our infrastructure items in the near future, hopefully, so we can make sure that we're doing everything we can to keep, um, things from going wrong, uh, the threats that there is on the water wastewater operation, you can say. Like, and they, every time we talk to them, they assure us again today that, that China is really focused on wastewater and water plants in the United States, so.
You mean attack us?
Yeah, if they can interrupt, if they can interrupt the functions of water, that disrupts society, so. So we'll, we just wanna always stay on top of that, make sure we're doing it. Excuse me, uh, on March twenty-fourth, so next Monday, the Kyle and Chip group will be at the Brown Center at five, that's kind of that county health initiative planned event going on, so, uh, that'll be the Arkansas City meeting, so if you wanna, I'll try to learn more about what's put on there. I'm sure there'll be opportunity for input, things on the kind of this whole countywide help that's going on, um, it affects poverty, housing, you know, all the whole scheme of things, so, that's a five team at Brown Center on the twenty-fourth. On the twenty-fifth to twenty-seventh, there'll be a member of the staff in Wichita at the KRWA conference, that's the Kansas Water Conference, where we get the training hours and for recertification, and so we'll be there three days. Then on the work session on March twenty-eighth, um, we're gonna have cross-site construction, Argo, Agora, architecture, and then Larry Kleeman here to go over kind of the scope of, and work and costs and, and financing of the, of the fire department organization, so I think we're kind of now at the point where we have, we know what work needs to be done, we've got a pretty solid cost on it. And then we can look at the financing options on how, how we can make it work, so, so we'll do that on the.
We got a little bit of good news on that last time, did we? Nothing, I don't, I mean, you ain't gotta say anything yet, but.
Yeah, um, the cost of the project has gotten down to what we need to be, but the problem is, is all the associated costs go with it. You've got to find it, the, the bond fee costs, and then the substantial cost for the architect, so. It's, it's doable.
Well, also, Ron was here, he talked about that void down there, we had that x-ray, and there's no void down there, so that's all good.
But, uh, so we do need to remove quite a bit of flooring in there, just because the plumbing.
Yeah.
Is under it, and it's, we're having a lot of problems with the, with sewer system and stuff in that building.
And the fire department's very gracious holding up on that, cause.
Yeah, they're, they're having to flush the sewer lines under the building, you think, it's just, you know, those were probably put in.
They're just basically they're old.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's time.
But we have, I think we have everything together now for you guys to make a informed decision and see what happens. Uh, PEC has started the survey work on the East Pressure Dump Project, so you'll see them out there running around right now, uh, and we've got the land, uh, under contract, we'll get that finished up once we get a survey of the property boundaries, and we'll get that, get that finished on the purchase of it, and so everything's moving along, get there. And then the outstanding student, um, is coming up, so on April eighth, we have a, at six o'clock, we have the outstanding student reception. That's where the, all the outstanding candidates. That's where the, all the outstanding candidates will be, uh, announced. And then on.
That's at the Brown Center?
Yeah, Brown Center. And then on the twenty-first at six thirty is the banquet. And that's where they'll, uh, we go to winners, so. Gonna get a nice meal and see the outstanding students that we have here. That's all I got tonight. Oh, and then there is a project list on there.
And the hike, hike, bike trails will start sometime this spring or?
Yeah, so we've got all the signed contracts back now, so all the, you guys have approved and signed them and the state did. And, uh, we're just waiting on the contractor now to schedule start time.
It's been four years, three years into it, Eddie.
Yeah.
Been a long time.
And in the, in our, uh, agreement with them, they have from March to June starts, so. Lot starts ticking down this time, but they haven't set a date yet.
What time did you say the chip thing was?
I, I didn't get it timed to get on the agenda. We did get the contractual agreement on the bridge replacement for X Street. It's about to be next week.
Right. Um, and then just, you know what, just for an update for anybody that's listening, uh, the signs, entrance signs. I know we talked about them a little bit on, on Friday.
Um, they're still doing the sandblasting, Tony? Is that, yeah?
And he do it, well, are they sandblasting that or is he doing that by hand?
By hand.
That's what we heard. So, okay.
Yeah, the bases are all installed now.
I saw that, right.
They're probably cured by now, aren't they, to take away? So.
Okay.
So once the stones are done, they're installed.
Right, commissioners?
Yes, sir. Do you have an update on Humane Society?
No, I'll get an update on that. Oh, I did, did, forgot to mention, they do have that, uh, their, uh, annual fundraising event will come up. If you're interested, we can get tickets for that.
When is that?
Uh.
April the, April eighth.
Yeah.
I have tickets for everybody that wanted to go. That first, that first Saturday in April. I wanna say it's the fifth.
That's our cleanup thing too, isn't it?
Yes.
That Saturday cleanup too.
Yeah.
Go get dirty and then go get cleaned up.
Yes.
Then you go treat it.
So you'll get a hot dog at noon there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Commissioners? Okay, and then I just wanted to remind you, and Shannon, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Gold redneck in me. It's thirsty Thursday. What do they call it?
Thursday at five.
Thursday at five. Thursday at five, uh, Margaret.
Margaret.
Grissom will be there, the new CEO for the hospital, so be a meet and greet, so, uh, encourage everybody to show up there. Pretty impressive lady.
Yeah, yeah, the foundation's hosting the, the every service, I think they're bringing treats to her, snacks.
I'd encourage everybody to show up for that, so. Um, comments from the audience? Well, come on, boss.
I'm the only one, man.
You're a home builder.
Steve Young, eleven eighteen North Tenth. I'm here to just talk about that gas light and
Yeah.
social media post. I went by there, I go by there every day for eight years. Go see my mother. I'm pretty mad right now because she's got COVID again. A shot, four boosters, but she's got COVID for the fourth time. Langer will hear from me. But.
We're on the same page on that one, so go ahead.
My friend. But on that post.
Let's go to mine.
I went by, they did a nice looking job finishing that. That approach is nice. Not complaining, but I do want to complain a little bit about the manner in which you display. As that was posted, it was, it read kind of like, well, they decided it's such a pretty day today. They'd come on out, we'll get their ass out there and take care of it before three months go by with an open driveway. Insane.
I, I talked to the, I talked to the operator. He had spoke with the homeowner and the homeowner said, and it was, it was all ran through.
Yes, I'm sure. So that's neither there, that's just a little anal in the back of my head.
Sure.
You know what I mean? But it looks good. The other thing I noticed when I went by there, went down there this morning, went by.
For all those who are wondering, this is on C Street, the water department did a.
By the canal.
Yes.
Right there by the canal, I go around C.
They were, they were, I was actually showing, I was doing more showing off our, uh, bobcat.
Yes, I know, but you know me, I'm gonna.
Oh, go right ahead, I'll take it.
Out there because I ain't curious.
You got three and a half more minutes, too, sir.
They, uh, the other thing. What's COVID on driveway, Tony? Uh, there's no reinforcement, wire, rebar, there's nothing necessary to cover. I've got a driveway, my driveway, I poured it myself thirty-two years ago, I haven't got a crack in it. Got a crack. Ten inch thick slab where they fixed the water mainboard and an inch and a half dropped to where they can't take the grinder and knock on button. I'll criticize them all day long and I'll get behind you if you want to give them raises for them that deserve it. They want professional wages and they, they turn out shit product. The job I'm talking about on C Street, when I stopped there this morning, eight inches. And you know the difference of cost between eight inches of mud and four inches of mud?
Right.
Why are they doing that? Well, we have piles.
I'd say, I'd say, and that may be a learning curve that we're working on and.
Well, and that's why, that's what I'm saying.
And I appreciate that.
As far as the waste payment, you know what?
Right.
There ought to be somebody in this young man's department that understands uh, construction a little bit to manage.
When I drove by, I did, I don't know, I'd have to look, Steve, tell you the truth, when I drove by, they were putting, uh, the, uh, they called rock down the.
Well, they may have.
So I don't, so I don't know, it wasn't, it wasn't Tony's room. So I don't know.
Yeah, they may have.
But when I went right by, they did have the rebar, but I, it did not look like it was gonna be an eight inch for to me.
Well, and then they may have dropped that rock. That rock should be dropped probably prior to the rebar.
Right, well, no, they, they were putting, they were putting the rock down. That's what he was beating on. The rebar was sitting off to the side. I didn't go by to check it out.
Well, you should.
So I think that.
Because the two by four measures.
I will, uh.
And when you've got another and another, you're supposed to eight.
I'll, uh, tell you what, I know the guy, I'll check with him, I'll at least get your real answer.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, because I don't like bitching all the time.
I don't believe that.
I don't. I really don't. But what I like is, is when I see something and this hurts. But Tappy has got a, he's done a hell of a job on that tree dump over there. That dude's beautiful. It's well maintained. It's a great deal. That's professional looking when you roll over there. The driveway that I'm griping about, that looks pretty good. So you drive by and how would, how would say a word about it?
Right.
But seeing what I saw, looking at your never ending draw on my property taxes and my sales taxing, why don't you try to curb costs where you can?
Let me find out what that, what that, that inch, those inches are.
And the second thing would be, did they stab you in the sleeve there fifteen feet long or did they full circle that patch under that guy? Because if they full circle it, then they put rebar on it, then they got six inches to eight inches of concrete on top of it. And then shoot. Because they need one.
Then they gotta break it up again. Sure.
All I'm saying, if they do something like that and overkill it.
Let me find out.
Time to saw it out and put some new C nine hundred in there, you know what I mean? That's all.
We're not sure they overdone it, but I'll find out. Go ahead. You, you're, you're one minute over, but I'm giving.
Well, that's all right. That's all I'm.
All right, thanks, Steve.
I'm totally lost what you're talking.
It's all right. It was one project on C Street in a, in a, in a.
Well, now the social media, Charlie. It was up on social media.
I thought that was on Second Street.
C Street.
The one he talked about.
Yeah, it's on C Street.
Well, the one, he might be talking about that one you guys did over on Poplar.
Oh, that was Poplar and Second. First and Second, correct. Yeah, that was a different one. Yeah.